Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Joyce Holdrick and Leo Wentz. Thank you. Don't call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rocha?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, overtime report for all departments for May 2025 as provided by the city controller received May 23, 2025. Three B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development devaluation reports reviewed May 27, 2025. Three C, controllers report for the month ending May 31, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
So I had, I had a few. DPW just wanted to remind residents that both City Hall and Department of Public Works is going to be closed Thursday on June 19th in observance of Juneteenth. Trash and recycling will be one day behind this week. Also, the Brooks Mine at Naug Park is open every Saturday for guided tours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So there's no charge for tours, but donations are gratefully accepted. The mine is staffed by volunteers from the Underground Miners Group, so that is every Saturday guided tours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I also had an opportunity today to visit the, the local 60 Scranton Fire Department had an esophageal cancer screenings today over at Weston Field. It was today, tomorrow in the, on Thursday. That's going to be going on from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the next two days. The turnout was good today and I would encourage current, active, and retired firefighters to be screened. That is all, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to give a reminder, as asked by Ms. Jeffries about the Electric City Flower Show that's happening this Saturday, June 21st, that'll be held at Naug Park between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And there's going to be 70-plus vendors there, so a lot to, a lot to do down at Naug this weekend, but wanted to make sure to bring that up again. And another thing happening this week is Juneteenth and Thursday, the Blacks Scranton Project is going to be having their annual block party. That'll take place from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at their place over on 1902 North Main Avenue, and they have several other events this year for Juneteenth as well. So they're doing the following day Friday, Blacks Scranton Punk Fest from 2:00 to 6:00 at their center. The following day on Saturday will be a church service over at Beth La Amie Church, and that same day too, they'll also be having a brunch at 1:00 p.m. So plenty to do to celebrate Juneteenth. Just wanted to bring up all those events. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Frank, one second. I have just two. The public hearing that was scheduled for today will be held next Tuesday at 5:45 June 24th, and it will be advertised so that everyone will be able to have all the information for it. That's all. Good?
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanis.
Joan Hodawan is Scranton. First, I just want to say how great the windows look. I'd love to be able to get into the building when the sun is shining so to see what it looks like, so Frank, I'll be calling you when that happens, and you bring me up.
I'll be here, Joan.
And I really do think that it'd be nice if, you know, when the sun is shining through them, someone takes pictures to, you know, make sure everybody knows how wonderful they look. DPW, contract negotiations still progressing?
Still going, baby.
Yeah. One of the reasons I keep mentioning it is, you know, I'm sure that the BA office is deep into budget preparations, and one of the things that would be nice to know, you know, is if there's pay raises for DPW employees, that should be factored into the budget. And if that doesn't happen, if the negotiations drag on past that point, as it did with fire and police, then you have to go back and adjust the budget by giving back pay. So let's hope it gets done soon. Item 5F, the recycling contract with waste management. I found that very interesting that they were talking about the fee would be $96.65 per ton for commingled materials and that they were factoring in an annual price increase based on the Consumer Price Index. Anybody got a general idea what that CPI runs at approximately, is it like 3%? 5%?
Joan, I used to know, I, top of my head, I can't remember.
Yeah. At any rate, I assume that hopefully it's close to the basic inflation rate, which would make sense, but...
Yeah, I believe they use it to your specific area, too. They don't use it as a nationwide one, they use it to your GPI and your area.
So it'll be interesting to see how that goes up annually. Item 5G, the People Guru payroll processing contract. I was a little surprised when I saw the annual recurring fee would be $82,356. One of the reasons I say that is, one of the easiest things to automate is financial functions, like we have QuickBooks for accounting and bookkeeping, so you don't really need to hire accountants and bookkeepers anymore. You have other things like TurboTax, you know, so you don't have to have an army of tax preparers, you know? And, and these software programs are getting very sophisticated, and I'm just kind of curious, you know, hopefully down the road, HR will be able to get software to be able to do this in-house. $82,000 for an annual recurring fee, that's over $1,500 per week just to do payroll. That's a lot of money. And, you know, people used to pay accountants and bookkeepers and tax preparers, and they're history, and all you have to do is buy the software and get the updates. I looked at the overtime, and it's not that bad, but police are budgeted for $1.5 million overtime, and I hope that's based on situational requirements that cannot be controlled and not a staff shortage. So that's one of the questions I hope is asked during the budget process, is take a look at their overtime requirements, and firefighters, too, and what is the rationale for it? Because we should be aggressively recruiting and retaining firefighters and police. Let's see. Oh, has anybody found out who is now the head of DPW now that Scott Gassmeyer's flown the coop?
The person running it, Frank, what is the gentleman's name that's running it now?
They don't have an acting director as of today, however, Mr. Pat Kuzick is taking the helm.
Okay, but I hope they are beating the bushes, looking, you know, to get someone in there to assume that role. And if you would, in fifth order, if you have any more information on this Hilltop Heights project on South Webster and Saginaw Street, I'd be curious to hear about it because I haven't seen much information in the local media. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Bob Bowles?
I'd like to approach a second.
Kathy, please.
Here. If you could hand him that to pass through, I need it back before I leave. Thank you. Council Bob Bowles, Scranton. One of the things I'd like to really address tonight is PTSD. What I'm looking forward to doing here, and I'll leave one of these with you, you could, when I'm all done, you could copy this and see that each one of the council members get it. It's an introduction when Hurricane Helene occurred in late September, causing 249 deaths, producing the most lethal hurricane in the United States since '05. That was a consequence, at least $59.6 billion in damages. But the issue I'm getting at is, people who went out there, first responders, recovering the bodies that were entombed in the debris and the flood and everything else, develop PTSD. Now, so understand, so I help you understand, and you'll be able to read through this and you'll have a good idea, because it's kind of an extensive thing. But I'm involved with Dr. George Lindfeldt, who's a clinical psychologist in North Carolina, was in Florida, that we've worked together. I brought him here once already to speak at the General Merly about PTSD regarding the troops, the medical staff, and everybody else. And we invited the VA to be there, and they never, they came in, partway through the presentation, they walked out because it was about money. Our process isn't about money, it's about helping the people who have PTSD, and it could be anyone. It could be a housewife, an officer, military, first responders. I want to set up a clinic here in Lackawanna County, actually here in the city of Scranton. And what I like to do is take the former church I have, the Holy Cross Church, and convert that into a clinic for PTSD. And we could work this out. It's my belief that we need to help our people, and nobody's doing a damn thing about it. So we have to take this forward and move forward. So I'm willing to participate here with the council and everyone else to establish a PTSD clinic, and we all get together behind it, because it could happen to any one of you or anyone sitting here. So it's a, it's an epidemic in our community, and nobody realizes how intensive PTSD is, and I can leave this here. And the picture I showed you was back when Jim McDulte was the mayor in 82, 86. I showed you me sitting there when I ran against them in a pothole with a shovel, and guess what? We're in 2025, and we're still talking about the damn potholes. How many administrations have gone through here? Look at Lackawanna Avenue, the gateway to the city, it's a damn shame. Yet we can worry about Paige Cognetti and a pool here, a splash park, and, oh, look how pretty this is and how pretty that, and you didn't look a darn thing about who comes here and what they think about. And that's got to come to a halt. So this is why I wanted to show you how long this has been going on and the rhetoric. We got to stop it and make reality and put priorities, and that's paved these damn streets once and for all. The other part that went on here, go ahead, I was here Saturday with the Bob Bowles tours and trucker's trailer for Trump and America, and the people that stood there, as far as I'm concerned, were a bunch of traitors. Now, what precipitated things in the past? Mr. Ramon came here and started talking about my past campaign, and he's precipitated me defending myself and going after where it is. If you want to step on my toes, be prepared for me to come back at you.
Mr. Bowles, we don't, we don't, no threats.
Okay, and I appreciate the council understanding where it is, but nobody told them, you can't talk. He wasn't hammered out. He wasn't told to stop. Other people came up here blasting me, trying to say that I said something negative about Jessica. Her profession is one of the best damn professions. She knows, she's seen me at Lehigh Valley going through physical therapy there that I needed when I tore an Achilles tendon, and there's nothing better than her profession. The other part of it is, has nothing to do to her professionally, and I want people to get that through their damn head that made those comments.
Thank you.
That I do not but respect what she does and how many poor-ass bodies like ours that she's put back together. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Angela Ramon?
All right, it's good to see everyone here tonight. I have a few different things I'd like to speak about, so I'll try and be a little brief with each one. But the first thing I'd like to discuss tonight is related to my previous comments regarding immigration and the city's relationship with ICE. Earlier today, I looked at the news and heard that New York City mayoral candidate Brad Lander, as well as the city controller, was arrested and detained by ICE in a New York City courthouse. The reason why he was detained was because he was, he was present during immigration hearings that were going on in the courthouse that are a part of the normal legal process that people go through when they request asylum, permanent residency, and so on and so forth in our country. And he was walking with some of these immigrants who were going through their hearings through the courthouse because he was concerned about their safety, as ICE had been operating in the courthouse and snatching up immigrants left and right regardless of whether they are here illegally or not, or whether they have deportation orders or not. And what I would like to say as it relates to Scranton is, are we going to take action here to make sure that those sorts of events don't take place? Are we going to make sure that our courthouses remain a place where people are, are able to safely appear regardless of if they're a plaintiff, a defendant, going, going through civil proceedings, or a criminal even, and know that they can show up, that they can testify, and not be concerned that they're going to be legally detained by the federal government because we allow them to operate here? I would like the city council to take a moment to consider all of the people in Scranton who are witnesses to crimes, victims of crimes, who appear in our courthouses on a regular basis to testify, to think about all of the people who, because of the actions of immigration enforcement and the lack of our city protecting, protecting our immigrant community, how many people are afraid to come forward to the police when they're victims of crimes, or when they've seen something happen and they know that their testimony could make the difference between like a guilty conviction or someone walking free who should be in prison? It does no good whatsoever for our community, for our city, for the entire process of law to allow ICE to come in, into our city, into our courthouses, into our city hall, into our schools, into our hospitals, and illegally detain people who are going about their daily lives, going about their business, who are just trying to be members of our community because they deserve to feel safe in the same way that I deserve to feel safe, and so do all of you. So that's all my comments regarding immigration tonight. I would also like to briefly talk about Safe Haven resolution that Dr. Rothschild had mentioned the other day that she's currently drafting, and talk a bit about the importance of protecting queer people's rights in our city. Many, many, many queer people across Pennsylvania and across the United States at this moment are facing vicious deliberate attacks from their elected representatives, from their legislators, who are trying to make it impossible for queer, for queer people to exist safely out in public. We've seen it in our own community here where I've been harassed, I've been threatened, I, in particular sexually harassed with comments made about how, you know, I should get a bra because I really need to wear one, which was made two weeks ago today. Being out in public in the city, I've been accosted, called a faggot, called a tranny by people who do not know me, have never met me once in their lives, and just felt in their hearts that it was the right thing to do to go out of their way to make my days, make my day worse and harass me for no other reason than to hurt other people. A Safe Haven resolution is an important step that the city of Scranton can take to protect the rights of all queer people in our city, to be protected from harassment, to be protected from discrimination out in public, in their workplaces, in their schools, in healthcare, and so on and so forth. So I would like you to consider passing such a resolution. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Ryan Lindberg?
Ryan Lindberg, 1420 Kapous. Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here also about community safety, not just as it relates to law enforcement, but about how our city's cooperation with federal immigration enforcement, particularly ICE, affects whether all Scranton residents feel safe and protected. We know that as a city, we're required to comply with federal laws. That's not what's in question. But how we choose to cooperate and how far we go, that matters. We can follow the law without helping to enforce unjust and discriminatory practices. In many recent cases, ICE today often extends far beyond individuals with criminal records. Instead, they often seem to target communities based on whom lives there, who shops there, and what people look like. This creates a culture of fear, not safety. This fear is not abstract. Earlier this month, after reports of ICE presence in the Hill section, local groups distributed red cards outlining individual rights because people were scared. This fear is real and has a local impact. Now, I'm not here to accuse every ICE officer of bad intentions, but we cannot ignore the real harm that's happening simply because someone made a wrong assumption about who they were or where they came from. And this isn't hypothetical. We've seen a 54-year-old man with a learning disability detained in Illinois despite having an ID on him. We have seen a pregnant woman and her four children removed from her home while ICE searched for her undocumented husband. Just a week ago, we have seen an Afghan interpreter who supported our troops detained while attending an immigration hearing for his visa, and now he fears execution if he's deported back to Afghanistan. These are not isolated incidents, and they are part of a disturbing pattern. And sadly, this pattern is not new. Back in 1904, a Scranton superintendent of police, Lona B. Day, gave a speech in Washington, DC called "Lawlessness Among the Foreign-Speaking People." He singled out Italian immigrants as dangerous, not for what they did, but for who they were. That speech used to justify unfair treatment under the name of law enforcement. That was 120 years ago in Scranton. But if we're not careful, we risk repeating that history in modern form. We have a choice to do better, to lead with humanity instead of fear. So tonight, I respectfully ask city council to consider the following actions. One, ensure no city agency cooperates with ICE without a judicial warrant. Two, prohibit city departments from sharing private resident information with ICE that includes court dates, addresses, or school enrollment data. Three, make our schools, libraries, and hospitals ICE-free zones. No one should be afraid to seek care, read a book, or send their child to school. And finally, support legal defense resources for immigrant families. Due process is an inalienable right granted by the Constitution. It shouldn't depend on someone's income level or access to private counsel. I'm not asking us to break the law, I'm asking us to lead with fairness. Now, I believe that religion and politics should be kept separate, however, regardless of faith, I think we all recognize the value of the golden rule. Treat others the way you want to be treated. That's not just a religious value, that's a human one, and it should guide how we treat each other in this city. I'm not here to only raise concerns, I want to support the steps Scranton has already taken to become a more just, welcoming city. Let's continue that progress together, and remember how we treat the most vulnerable says everything about who we are. So let's not choose, let's not lose our humanity in the pursuit of what we think justice looks like. Instead, let us lead with compassion and come together to build a better tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. Going to say something about last week, and that's all I'm going to say about it. Last week, everybody came down on Bob Bowles for what he said. Bob Bowles isn't the one that started this war of words. The person Bob was talking about was the one that started it. The week before, that person spoke about Bob Bowles. If he didn't want anything said about him, he shouldn't have said anything about Bob Bowles. Bob Bowles never spoke to that person, doesn't, never spoke about him, and Bob was the one that was provoked, and I can't blame him for coming back at that person. And I'm amazed at how you people stood up for that person, because he was the one that started it, not Bob Bowles. And all these people showed up last week because their friend had their feelings hurt. Oh, well, boo hoo. And the one speaker said, "We show up." Oh, really? You show up? Where are you tonight? You show up once out of the 52 weeks out of the year because your friend had their feelings hurt. I show up. I've been coming to these meetings for 23 years. Joan Hodawanis shows up, Bob Bowles shows up, Lee Morgan shows up. We showed up when Chris Doherty was trying to tear this city apart and not pay our unions, and we know where that ended up. So we show up. Showing up one week out of 52 weeks isn't showing up. That's all I'm going to say on that matter. I, I think Bob is owed an apology, not that other person. I spoke about this two weeks ago. Pave cut on the 1400 block of Bulwark Street. Nothing was done, and it's getting worse. I go there every day. You have to literally stop your car and just roll through with your foot on the brake, or you're going to do damage to your car. It's unbelievable. It's just, it keeps sinking and sinking, and I don't know if it was the gas company or water company, but it's terrible. It's right in the middle of the block, the 1400 block, and...
I will. Thanks, Senator. All right. Well, let's check.
Now, another thing, the storm drains that they put in on Doherty Street last year by the ball fields, I spoke about this before, they didn't do a good job, they didn't allow for settling. I mean, the storm drains are working, but in certain spots, what they put in settled, and now there's puddles there. All the water's not making it to the... All the water's not making it to the storm drains. I'm no engineer, but I know you got to fill it in and allow for settling, and they didn't do that. And now it's settled in certain areas, and there's big puddles after the big rains. So whoever did that doesn't know what the heck they're doing. So I don't know if they can do anything about it now. It might be too late. But it is better than it was, but it's still not perfect. Lastly, Bob mentioned Lockon Avenue. I mentioned that a number of weeks ago. It's terrible, terrible. It's like it was hit by bombs. It's so rough, and the one corner is that there's no arrows telling you where to go. People are going straight from the turning lanes. It's terrible shape for one of the main streets in the city. They got to do something about it. But I think that's the Pendon Road, but something's got to be done. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Connors?
Good evening. Suzy Connors, lifelong Scranton resident. I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first is that I just want everyone to know publicly that I stand behind the LGBTQ community, as well as all ethnicities and religions. As a 100% Ashkenazi Jew, I have been met with many incidents of antisemitism. So I know, not lately, but even when I was a kid, actually. So I know exactly what it feels to be on that end of the, you know, the receiving end of that. And I want to just read a poem by a pastor, Lutheran pastor named Martin N. Muller, who lived from 1892 to 1984. I'm not going to go into his whole background, but he was born in Germany. He was a Nazi sympathizer. He voted for Hitler in 1933, but by 1938, he had changed his thinking drastically. And because of that, he was sent to Dachau. He was in a concentration camp from 1938 to 1945 until the camps were all liberated. If you want to know more about him, you could Google him. I'm not going to go into his complete history and story, but it is quite fascinating. And again, it's Martin N. Muller, N-I-E-M, hold on, M-O-L-L-E-R. But anyway, he wrote a poem in 1946 that I think is very appropriate for today. He said, "In Germany, first they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics, and I did not speak out because I was a Protestant. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." So very wise words from a man who spent seven years as a political prisoner, probably. Now, on a nice, a good note, I want to just mention that this Sunday, June 22, is Jim Connors' day at Naok Park, where there will be concerts from 1 to 6 with bands, Doug Smith's band, Magic Moments with Paul Acosta, The Taxmen, which is a Beatles tribute band, and Broke Pines, which happens to be my son's band. And around 3:15, there will be a dedication ceremony dedicating the summer concerts in Jim's name. So I hope you can all come. I'll give you these. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Connors. Ron Elman?
Good evening, counsel. Growing up, one of the things I learned that it takes a good man to say sorry. And I mean that, you know, it's inside of me. And as an ignorant fool at this time, I did so many things. I ran around with an older crowd in Memphis. As I said, I grew up with so many of those boys that went on, Stella Stevens and Elvis and so many of them. I used to meet my friends to play golf almost every year. I drove from California to Memphis to spend a couple days, and that was before the expressways. That's what my friendship meant with them. Now, the 50-some years I've been here, I have developed so many friendships that mean so much to me. And to see a meeting destroyed like last week was very hurtful. Mr. Bolis expressed an opinion. Those people, they want to change. They mandated for counsel and us to accept their ideals and everything. We can't do that. You know, I've just, I have really just had enough. Probably the last 50 years I've been, I came here in '72 with Jimmy Cle for a meeting. That's how long ago I've been to him. I went a couple times with him. I sat with Mr. Connors and him at lunches. So many people that I, they're all gone now, but I'd like to see a room named after Jimmy Cle. That man spent 50 years in this building. He's forgotten now. Well, being on the streets like I've been all my life, most of my life up to now, I must have been to four, 500 meetings in this room. And there was some across at the library that probably y'all don't know about when they were working here doing something. And I bet I've talked to 1,000 people over all these years, mostly about politics. And we are a forgotten city, you know? No McDade no more, no Casey, no Courteney. We're sort of like a little corner that's forgotten. Bridget relies on her husband to see what's on CNN or something to tell her how to vote. She made a statement like that to run for office. Well, I'm going to run for a council seat. I don't need any donations because donations are nothing, contributions are nothing but That's why the mayor has such a huge war chest. And somebody needs to wake up Sleeping Beauty and tell her there's an election coming on. I hope to be a voice for all the people like Janet Evans was. And I have so many thoughts and ideas that were given to me over the years. I'd like to present at the council meetings. I hopefully will be elected. If I'm not, I just go my way like I always do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, counsel. Lee Morgan. There's nothing on the ECTV fiasco that's going on right now. I'm still waiting for their attorney to respond to me. But, you know, I'm, last two weeks at home, watched the meetings. You know, I'm so opposed to the flag that we're flying outside, and it's not because somebody's a homosexual or transsexual. It has nothing to do with that. You know, we're a nation so divided that finally, the Supreme Court has ruled that Caucasian people have been discriminated since the beginning of affirmative action. You know, discrimination wears many faces, and I think that we've lost sight of reality here. Nobody cares what they do in their bedroom. I remember when I was a child, I grew up on Mulberry Street, not all my childhood, but my adolescence. We had the most flagrant transsexual that lived right in front of us. When he was a man, he was Richard Spindler. When he was a woman, he was Marcellus. You know, when people come, and what we've done to our country is just kind of ridiculous watching these meetings. I mean, people are talking about gender-affirming care. Their gender was affirmed at birth. Nobody cares, you know, if somebody wants to change their appearance, that's fine. I don't think the taxpayers should do it. You know, when somebody comes here and they tell you they want to be respected, and I think everybody should be respected, but when they hand you a file from the court on a speaker who came here and spoke, and the council takes it, and just the politics that this council played with this issue is just amazing. It's terrible. You know, my father went to fight World War II from high school at Scranton Tech to Europe. D-Day just went by. You know, why don't we put a flag up for a month for that? Why don't we put up some kind of thing that shows all the veterans who were left behind in the Vietnam War that never came home? You know, everybody's screaming about rights and wanting to be respected, but you know what? Respect goes two ways, not just one way. And for the people who come here and complain about the conditions of the streets and the city's condition, they voted for all this over all the decades, and it hasn't served us well. Don't forget, we had a pothole machine that sat out in the rain allegedly, and they discarded it, or they'd be fixing all the potholes. We've just, we've taken ourselves in a place where it's hard to realize that our government is really representing us. We have a person come up here talking about due process, yet they have a removal order. That means they had due process. You know, we have an exit named after Joe Biden here. It's just, it's the silliest thing. He never knew he was president. It's the silliest thing, and they've basically just about proven it. It's elder abuse. They used to put tape on the floor so he knew where to walk to. His own family knew he wasn't competent, and nobody cared. And the country didn't care either because people got killed in Afghanistan. A ton of people, over a million people, got killed in Ukraine. He got on television and said that the Democratic Party had built the most advanced election fraud machine in the history of mankind. That's how diminished he was. And the American people just stood there and watched it. And the Congress and Senate, just like you gentlemen, our legislators stood there, not just Democrats, but Republicans too, and did nothing. Nothing, absolutely nothing. And the history books, they're already being printed. All these people that were on all the Department of Treasury, you name them, they had to give their questions that they were going to ask the president in writing. He couldn't call up a reporter and ask a question. He had to have the question and the answer they were going to give him before he called their name. Everything was played out. And you wonder why the country's in the trouble it's in, because the American people lack something: backbone and commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Rick Little?
Hi, I'm Rick Little from Scranton, still running for mayor. In the course of human events in the city, it's been a wild week. I mean, a milestone week for me. Like to congratulate Josh Balls for this Warped Tour that he put on over there, four days on Wyoming Avenue. I think in years to come, it'll be looked back as the Woodstock of Scranton. And then there was my childhood greatest hero, Brian Wilson, died, who I discovered when I was 10 years old through a radio coming in from Kentucky. And when I heard the first Surfing USA in Chicago, I'd just go to the record store and say, "Give me Surfing USA." But his whole life was a, it's like everything, the fights in his family, most of the band was his family, and ups and downs, and, you know, he had Alzheimer's, and his brother Carl died of cancer, and his other brother Dennis, the whole Manson thing. We're talking about pop culture here and LGBTQ and, you know, things that make you famous, things that make you rich, you know? But we've just been taught for years and years to be slaves. I mean, I've been, it's been called numerous different things for years. I think Alex Jones pinned it perfectly, calling it globalism. But I've been seriously thinking about it for 50 years, you know, the Illuminati, the deep state, the military-industrial complex. And just this week, I mean, it's biblical, the stuff that's happening. All my life, there's trouble in the Holy Land, and we're talking about World War I and World War II, and veterans, and, you know, I see these people out there protesting the No Kings Day. No Kings Day is July 4, by the way. But no one really, you know, they just twist everything in the media to make it fit. And we're talking about, you know, people are saying, I see all these signs, you know, Medicaid saves lives, and Medicare saves lives. Well, you know, Social Security saves lives. And in this town, there's a lot of people who are right on the cusp, because I know that Scranton Housing Authority, they're very strategic. They start their evictions in the fall, when the holidays come, where you can't say anything to a judge. I mean, Judge Moyle said to me, "Nobody wants to see you homeless." Well, that's a lot of BS. Of course they want me homeless, you know, because I witnessed what happened in their buildings. And now there's these people at Park Gardens, and they're all like, you know, old ladies and men who have been here for God knows how long, you know, 50 years. They're old. They're, you know, Irish Catholics. They're Democrats. They brought up this thing. But we've been brainwashed into this whole thing, you know, climate change, and it's, you know, I walk by the Times Tribune and look at the printing press in there. They don't print the paper there. They ride a diesel truck to Philadelphia to print the thing out. And, you know, all this talk about flags, I want to talk about the government, you know? I made a mock-up of a flag that I'd like to see done. It's the Happy Homeless Flag, HH, with a roof there, and it's translucent so you can see through it. And I proposed that, I gave you the legislative thing last week, because I couldn't figure it out on my phone how to send all this stuff. But I think it would be great if we got our heads together on what this legislative body is, what the executive locally is, which is the mayor, and, you know, the judiciary runs it all. The DA's run it all, the lawyers run it all in this whole area.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Dave Dobson? Dave, wake, somebody wake Dave up.
I get three turns right. I was out in the hospital the last two weeks, so, on Tuesday night. Nothing fixed, anyway. Okay, you know, these cuts to the pay were brought up again. And Lackawanna Avenue, I mean, I seen it last year. It was the utilities tearing it all up. I mean, right from by the movie theater all the way up past Dunkin' Donuts. Please don't tax me to fix that. Sue them first. It's a must. I don't have any more left. Okay, you know, I don't know what, why we really needed to feature Old Forge Rabble Rouser down there on January 6th in a lawsuit, but forget about it. I'm not interested in your problems. Stock market, keep watching it. We're ruining the whole global financial network. We're determined, gonna fix it our way. Can buy Bitcoins and get rich. Whoopie. Yeah, right. I only, ever when I advised my missus on what to invest in, it was only in legitimate companies in the S&amp;P. And it grew at eight and a half percent a year while she had that 401K. Okay, we heard about arrests without hearings and stuff like that. I have a concern. You know, back in South Africa, around the turn of the century, maybe the 90s, they finally, Mandela got released from prison, and they had a reckoning court. I don't know if that's what it's called, I don't remember. But you could walk into that court and admit to murders. And as long as you plead guilty to the murder, you are not punished for it. Because there was so much violence going back and forth between black and white, and probably a lot of white people, a lot more than black people. But the point being that now we're accepting immigrants from South Africa. I mean, I'm sure that a little kid never committed a murder at that time. But it would be interesting to know if we are allowing people that pled guilty to murders, they could always stay where they're at. We don't need them. And Kennedy, my buddy, oh, take some vitamin A. Kennedy. He fired 17 people on the Board of Health and Human Services last week. They were experts on vaccinations and so forth. And now he's hired QAnon-type in his place, conspiracy theorists. I mean, like, really? You know, this country is being destroyed. It's being ruined. And it's being ruined by the people that are in power right now. And the people that didn't show up to vote, even though they probably knew better or should have known better. And, you know, the whole taxing, putting a tariff on coffee, we don't grow coffee here. We are an island that has nothing but penguins living on it. You know? I mean, such nonsense. We don't have enough problems. It's really stupid. I'm a little worried about the country because it's not, you know, all of this. Medical attention isn't a privilege. It's not a right. It's a necessity, you know? And the last I heard, the Medicaid, which is for indigenous people, the bills were not paid from December, or January 31st. So, you know, I'm kind of tired tonight and struggling with different things, but hopefully things will get better, but somehow I doubt it. Thank you and have a good night.
That's all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Good evening, Counsel Virgil Argenta. Regarding the Keystone Mission closing, a recipient of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, they received at least $50,000 from the city, $43,500 to be exact, from the city of Scranton. It is closing operations in Scranton, Lackawanna County, and Wilkes-Barre and Luzerne County. Wilkes-Barre gave them $325,000. It's almost certain that we will not be able to recoup any of the funding. Would counsel request certified itemized documentation from Keystone Mission detailing where and how the city funds were spent, followed by a forensic audit? The major question remains whether the city of Scranton is prepared for the potential influx of homeless individuals who were previously serviced by Keystone Mission daily. Regarding the use of Western Field facilities and the clothing-washing services, how will these needs be addressed going forward? There are honest, true, legitimate nonprofits in the city that require assistance that would benefit from some city support, rather than the fabricated nonprofit organizations created by acquaintances. How is this investigation of the validity of the many nonprofits going within the city? Are we still looking into those? It's time to demand a forensic audit of the ARPA fund's account, rather than relying on someone's word and fabricated ledgers. Come January, when the new city council is seated, there will definitely be full accountability and transparency. That's a guarantee. The new 36-unit Hilltop Heights development, initially believed to be a senior housing, will now be low-income. There's no problem with low-income housing, but the police, but this area has seen an increase in police incidents lately. Is our police department adequately staffed for the officer's safety first, so they can effectively handle their workload, and then protect others safely? The area for this development already includes Hilltop Manor with 250 units, Valley View Terrace with 189 units, Skyview with 188 units, Laurel Woods in Manuka with 59 units, totaling approximately 700 units in the Upper South Side neighborhood. Other low-income throughout the city, downtown Scranton accommodates Adam's apartment, 64 units, Adam Highrise with 185 units, Washington West with 120 units, Washington Plaza, 60 units, and Midtown Village, totaling approximately 500 units in the downtown area. West Scranton compromises Jackson Heights, 96 units. Jackson Terrace Apartments have 50 units. Riverside Apartments have 40 units, totaling approximately 200 units in West Scranton. North Scranton includes Banger Heights with 150 apartments, Townhouse Boulevard with almost 200 apartments, totaling a little under 400 apartments in North Scranton for low-income. There is additional low-income housing scattered throughout the city. The condition of some of these properties managed by the Scranton Housing Authority raises some serious concerns. For example, Riverside Apartments on Emmett Street exemplify these issues. Has anyone ever drove past there or drove through there? Just because it's low-income, the citizens and the people that live there don't need it to be treated that way. Another example of questionable city-owned housing is Park Gardens, where the rent was raised with very little upgrade. Surprised if some of these units would even pass a HUD inspection. You've heard the complaints from the residents there. There hasn't been upgrades there in 30 years. If the current properties can't be adequately maintained, it is not advisable for the city to expand any further low-income properties. Counsel, you should put a stop to that. Another notable example is the condition of the city parks. With the city adding more parks, it makes absolutely no sense when they can't keep up with the ones that they have. Last week, I presented a very dangerous situation in the electric building, the Five of Linden. Tonight, it's still there, and that piece of copper's still flapping. Do you know who you reported that to? Do you have a contact person?
Yes.
So maybe we could call that person out and ask them why, or he could personally sign liability if somebody gets hurt?
They said it will be down by tomorrow, Mr. Molesberger.
Thank you, Mr. Smear.
And our code enforcement was there when you called. Thank you.
Tom Coymanuka. First of all, and reference the DPW director, I believe the last DPW director was let go about a month ago. I'm not exactly sure when the date was that he was let go. But I understand that Pat Cusick, per the statement here, is the acting DPW director. When did he officially?
Not acting yet.
Okay, so there is...
We mentioned that in caucus.
There is no acting director at this point?
No.
Okay, so at this point, there is no director, there's not even a acting director, it's an open position?
Not titled. I just found out today that one of the supervisors is handling it for now. That's all I have.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out, say, if they're an acting director, the time clock has started for them either being permanently put in the position or being removed. If there's no acting director, who's running the ship? Someone has to be. Or are we having an acting director that's not an acting director, so we don't run the clock?
No, this gentleman doesn't want to be director of DPW, but he is helping us through this stage.
Someone has to be the head of the stream, which would be acting. You know, moving on from that, I brought up before you, the first piece of paper is from the Office of Open Records. The first one is a sunshine law, and it brings up in Section 8, can the public ask questions during the public comment period? And the Office of Open Records in the sunshine law specifically states, yes, although members of the agency are not required to provide answers, it is a good process, a good practice to do so whenever possible. Answering questions can demonstrate a commitment to helping constituents, and in many cases, answering questions informally in a public meeting. And it can reduce the requests, future requests, under the right-to-know law, which saves time and money for both agency commenter and requester. Under that section, it also has, which is at the bottom of the sheet, but I did not put in there, the Open Records also reflects that speaking before city council, you can limit it. But the limit on it that is specifically put in there is you can limit it to people who are citizens and taxpayers. They pay tax to the city in any way, whether it's payroll tax, whether it's living out and working, working here and living outside the Scranton, whether it's owning a building here. If they are a taxpayer to the city, they have a right before this podium. It's not that they have to live here. And as a matter of fact, in Section 407, the citizen's right to be heard in the Scranton Charter itself, it says, reasonable opportunity shall be provided for citizens and taxpayers to address city council on agenda matters before a vote is taken. Procedures for citizens' participation shall be determined by council, but it's codified in your very own city code under Section 408 that taxpayers can speak. We need to follow those rules unless you want to put through an ordinance to change Section 407 of the city code. City Charter, health and safety, this has come up beforehand. And it's been come up where who owns public safety for these buildings? It's nebulous in how it's written here, which makes me have to look back to when my mother and the body created the charter itself. They had executive meetings, and they came together, the government's council, and they actually wrote up the basis for the charter. And it was discussed the separation of powers in that, and how city council should be the one for public safety, because the mayor may be from one part of the city, whereas city council is usually from different sections and has, and is more adept at protection from different sections of the community. Section 502, acting requiring an ordinance, city council shall meet any public emergency affecting life, health, property, or the public peace. Section 609, which is the powers of the mayor, the mayor shall have the powers and duties to enforce, not to write, not to create, to enforce any emergency powers that may be established by ordinance to preserve the health, safety of the citizenry. This body is given the health. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Frankie Malacarius, South Scranton. Lot to go through, just let me start with some disappointment about some of the words said up here. And of course, electioneering from the podium, and there you've gone before you've even been able to make any of your statements. But nothing new there. First off, I'd like to announce that today there was a local immigrants' rights coalition that was formed. It was announced, paper articles are starting to come out about that. If, I urge everyone on counsel to participate in helping to keep our immigrants safe in our city. We're a nation of immigrants. I'm pretty sure that everyone on counsel right now's family came from a different country. So, to keep that in mind. But I would like to, you know, reaffirm what I asked last week for city council to introduce legislation, both using us as, introducing us as a welcoming city, both for the LGBTQ community and for undocumented folks. Lastly, for final resolutions today, I have some comments on the Lace Village Dog Park project. Lace Village is an upscale, you know, development that is priced, you know, fairly high for our region. There, they have private recreational facilities out there in the, you know, that looks like it could very well be public, bocce ball, and I believe a tennis court out there. I don't believe that we should be giving them a quarter million dollars to develop a dog park with no strings attached. Since there are public recreational facilities there, I think that something that we should be asking in exchange for the quarter million dollars is to open up their facilities to the general public. I'm not against the, a dog park in the region. I think that is probably actually a good place for it. But I just think that if we're going to be giving them a quarter million dollars in the idea of developing the area around them, even if it's not directly to Lace Village, that we should be getting something out of that as taxpayers. And I think by having them opening up some of the facilities that are there would be a great public benefit. So those are the main things that I would like you guys to consider this week, and I'll see you all next week.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Now, just, I was happy to see some of the streets getting ripped up today. They're starting that paving program. And now we have a number of streets identified that are, that are going to be paved throughout the city, as we typically do every year and every summer. the city, as we typically do every year and every summer. Also, I think, I've been concerned about that wall on Lackawanna Avenue for years, and it sounds like, once we get this resolution passed tonight, it sounds like the state's going to be able to move forward to repair that wall on Lackawanna Avenue and ultimately get that Lackawanna Avenue paved because it is a mess. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any more questions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. We do have on the agenda tonight, a new recycling contract. Last week, we did have a question about the recycling calendar, which we were looking into, but now that this recycling contract may be passed tonight, can we find out what the update is on the recycling calendar and if that's going to be going out for the month of July?
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. I got a call, the address is 2424 Cedar Avenue. Residents put in a complaint about a tree that's growing out into the road. They called the city to have the tree trimmed or see if it could be trimmed, but if we could put that in, 2424 Cedar Avenue.
I'll take care of it.
I got an update from the water company basin, those basins that keep coming up on Colfax Avenue, the water company was out there, I believe it was three times, and they were out with the VAC truck today, so they cleared roots out of the basin, and they also cleared 1600 block of West Gibson Street. So they just wanted, you know, it to be known that that Colfax basin has been cleared, and they've been out several times. Last two weeks, I did have some questions about our SRA director, and I did ask if she could come in to give us an update on what's been going on with the SRA. And I did get an answer back that she would be happy to attend the caucus in July, so happy to hear that we'll be having our SRA director come in to give us an update on what's been going on there over the course of the year, and we'll have her in on July. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Smear.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First off, wanted to bring up an issue that was brought to my attention by a resident who is on Golden Avenue in North Scranton, and they're, they're having a lot of feral cat issues in that neighborhood. I know it's kind of systemic issue throughout the city, but in particular, over there, seems to be pretty extensive and affecting the neighbor's quality of life. So I want to, and I know that they've, they've reached out, from what they've said several times in the past, to, to our animal control, and I'd like for us to also reach out to them to see what's been done over in that neighborhood to capture the feral cats. Sounds like they're also getting some diseases too, and a lot of them are, are sick and dying around people's properties.
I did reach out to the, to the, the people that take our...
Animal control.
Our animal control, yes.
Yeah.
And they have already started removing the cats, and I did speak with the people in neighborhood, or I emailed them back, and they did begin to remove them already out of the neighborhood.
Good.
So I don't know where they're putting them, but I know they've been, they've started removing them.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad we're on that. Yeah, because I'd hate to see the animals suffer as well and, and the residents, so. And then, there were a number of things that I just wanted to check in on, to check the status of, some things that I've been on top of for a while now. One of them being a property on Presky Avenue, 429. Actually, some memories that come up from pictures that I had of the property, I think it was from four years ago, and they had a fire, and it's been sitting there ever since. And at one point, I think the owners were going to renovate and repair it, but then didn't, and so it's still just there, and it's becoming overgrown. And there was a neighbor who was contacting me pretty frequently about the property, but they were renting their place, and they've since moved, in large part due to the nuisance of this, this property being there. So I'd like to find out if, if it's still on the condemnation list, if it's going to be on a demolition list, what the status is.
I'll ask the Blight Coordinator tomorrow.
Please, thank you. And I've been asking for new stop signs to be replaced over at Madison Avenue and Olive because they're, they're quite worn and have graffiti on them as well, and I believe that still hasn't been completed.
That is on their list. I'll send out a reminder.
Thank you. And we briefly talked about this in caucus, but I was inquiring too about if anything has been done over at the lookout with the repair of the, of the stone wall that's there. And so, to my knowledge, it has not been completed, and I think we were waiting on some information from DPW about doing that, or they were going to put it on their list. And, and I'm aware that we don't have a director currently of DPW, but if we could ask the other staff about the lookout and see if there are any plans to repair it anytime soon.
I will. I'll ask Mr. Cusick tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing that I've been asking about, the curb cut over on Colfax and Olive. Still looking for an update on, on that and what's holding up that project.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
A couple. So last week, I mean, we can't have a meeting where our potholes aren't brought up, and we all experienced the obstacle course to get here, get to work, and I realize it. And so, and I've been getting complaints from poor residents that are, you know, getting flat tires or getting damage to their car. And I asked last, I asked the week before last, what's recourse? What's a recourse for our residents? And, because I did hear in the past, I'm trying to remember, but residents were satisfied in some way. I don't remember the process, I was too young. But the answer I got last week, well, it's utility companies' problem. So I, I didn't like that answer, and I had Mr. Waldenberg clarify to me and inquire and get me a little more information because it didn't sound right to me. So what I got was, council inquiries in the city has a policy procedure for motors in the city. All right, so the law department processed claims filed with the city as they're received. Receive the claim from the driver or the insurance company and file that claim with our carrier, who assigns an adjuster to evaluate and make recommendations on the claim. If appropriate, we will issue payment to our deductible. So there is a policy, or is a procedure, we finally found out. So, and you know, it doesn't look like this is going to get cleared up anytime soon, all these potholes. I, I know there's a new system put in place, a tracking system and a new strategy, but until then, could you please have this put, ask if they put this on the website?
I will, sir.
So we can all refer, because whenever we get a call, or you, or you find people here can refer to other people as you hear this complaint. It would be greatly appreciated. All right, so next, I have a couple issues, quality of life. So 316 South Avenue, the grass is out of control. This house was condemned due to animal hoarding, and there was a sheriff's sale last week, and I don't think it was sold. So, you know, it's the beginning of the summer, it's going to get hotter, we had a lot of rain, this, this issue is not going to get any better. So if you could please alert code enforcement to that property.
I will, sir.
And also, I've gotten multiple complaints on the 700 block of West Elm Street. There's constant speeding going on. It's becoming very dangerous for the residents. If you can alert Highway and let them know.
I'll alert them.
I will, thank you. And then, I also received complaints about feral cats. I don't know if it's the same person, because I don't have the actual street, but I remember last year was a big issue. And they said they were going to get better at it, or, you know, there's a little blame game with, well, Griffin can't take them unless they're, you know, they're dangerous or, or so, and they have no room. And then, we have a great street cats organization that really does a lot for us, but they need help, the residents need help, because, I don't know if it's the same person, but she's in, having issues with cats that are all over the neighborhood. They have to power wash their patio. If they want to go out and, and they have to power wash their grill because it's that bad. There's fleas and, and some type of cat leukemia that's, is that the same one then? Well, I'm just going to expand a little because I promised her I'd bring it up. So it's an issue for the whole neighborhood. It's not just her. So, and I'll be honest with you, I have a couple cats in my neighborhood, and I don't feed them, I don't entertain them, I'm an animal lover, but these, these are cats that are stray cats, and when I go out on my patio, I have these cushions that are covered with hair. So they're, you know, they're sleeping on there at night. And so, we need to get better at this and see what strategy, different from last year, what's going to happen, because it's, like I said, like, it's going to get worse because it has since last year.
We did reach out on that neighborhood, and I spoke with Mr. Smear, and he suggested that they develop a plan moving forward.
Good, good. We need a strategy. And that's all I have. Thank you.
What, 316? They issued a citation today on 316 South Avenue.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
I have a few things. This is from the Polish National Church. This was sent to a check, an amount of $5,000 payment in lieu of our 2024 pilot, an agreement with made on October 14th, 2018, concerning property identification number, and they give their property number. I didn't know we had agreements with anyone, but I will look into that after the meeting. But they did send $5,000, and they sent $2,500 to the Scranton School District, $1,250 to the city of Scranton, $1,250 to Lackawanna County in lieu of taxes. And this is from Reverend Anthony Mikowski from the Polish National Church. Thank you for that. I'll do this, anyway. I didn't see, this says an agreement. That's the only thing I'd like to look up and see what kind of agreement we had with them, because, also, 507 Linden Street, that, two flashings, two of the big pieces of copper flashing were taken out, but code enforcement was there, and they said, we've got this response yesterday, so it said it would be taken down in the next 48 hours. So I would hope by tomorrow it is gone. Golden Avenue, we went over that, the stray cats. And also, 1016 Stafford Avenue, they are doing the asbestos report on that building now, and they're trying to find funding to take that building down. That's one of the front that's falling off. And one other thing, the corner of Crown Avenue and Hickory Street, where they are building the new Yeshiva school, the entire intersection is filled with like dirt and runoff dirt and stuff that is, it just keeps accumulating. I asked the DPW if they would send the street sweep up there just to get it out of there, and also if code enforcement would look at it, or whomever would decide, is the dirt coming from the construction project, or is the dirt coming from runoff on the road? I've never seen it before, but if it's just started, but if it is a construction project, I would like them to do the proper, take the proper steps and to control that dirt that's all over the road. But if it is normal runoff, then I understand it's ours, but it's never happened before. And also, Mr. Waldenberg, I, I believe I sent you this this morning, a church in the 1900 Prospect, I have nine people sent me complaints about it. It's gotten very loud, and they've asked them to quiet it down. I don't know what the ordinance are, I don't know if we have a machine to measure the sound, but if we can send that to, I believe, code enforcement and see if there's anything we can do with that.
I will. I'll follow up. That's been a problem in the past.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've called that forward in the, in the past a couple of times to SPD, and we had not received any response.
Okay, very good. And that is all.
5B for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the city of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for up to $250,000 to be used towards the Whittier School Yard project.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Resolution for plan revision for new land development located at 1230 North Kaiser Avenue.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Rutledge Excavation to perform the Tripp Park Stormwater Project.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Waving responsible contractor ordinance requirements for the procurement of Tripp Park stormwater improvements.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Waste Management of Pennsylvania, Inc., to perform recycling processing.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with People Guru, Inc., to perform payroll processing services.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 79, 2025, in ordinance, establishing a no parking zone along the easterly curb line of State Route 3025, known as Wyoming Avenue, from segment 0020, offset 850, to its intersection with Olive Street for a distance of 377, 370 feet, to its intersection with Olive Street to allow the safe-site distances for a proposed driveway.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, file to council number 78, 2025, amending the responsible contractor ordinance, Chapter 113 of city code, to improve implementation.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Well, on the question, no, I'm sorry. So on the question, we were back and forth with this. I was myself with the amount or the threshold, and if we don't increase it, my understanding is, and this is the information we got from administration, is we not, we might not be able to complete all the projects that we're committed to. All right? So with that said, if, if I agree and vote, agree to the threshold, the new threshold amount, amount, and my understanding is, there'll be more bidders be allowed to participate, which I'm in favor of too. I wasn't crazy about the amount, amount, but in order to do that, that's why I struggled, but that's why I'm, I'm going to support this. And, but I need the administration to support us and support the residents and stay on top of change orders, and that'll increase the projects that we're trying to save enough money to do, to complete all the ones we're committed to. So I'm committed to this. I hope they're committed to staying on top of change orders, because I want every project that we, that we committed to completed, because the ARPA checkbook is empty. It's gone. So if these projects aren't completed, I don't want to see either them not completed or put back on the residents' taxpayers. All right? So I'm, you know, I'm having faith in agreeing to this new, the change of this ordinance, but I also want the same from our administration.
On the question, I also had been hesitant with this piece, and especially since it hasn't been that long when we did pass the RCO, but the amount that we initially selected has not seemed to be working out in terms of getting, getting the bids needed for projects. And I'd rather change the amount now than have and I'd rather change the amount now than have to continue to make exceptions for projects in the future, like we've had in our legislation already. I think that that's, that's kind of pointless, so if this amount is going to work now for the ordinance, for us to still have responsible contractors on those, on those larger projects while getting a fair amount of bidders with fair bidding in that lower range, then, then I'll be in agreement for this.
On the question, I'll be supporting this this evening. I simply don't want to see these projects jeopardized, and by raising it to 500,000, it's going to allow for more competitive bidding, which would save our taxpayers a lot of money, so that's why I'm supporting that legislation this evening.
So also on the question, we did make an amendment to lower the threshold here to $100,000. We're being asked at this point in time after data has come in to increase that threshold. We've had some data that's coming in from the city that's saying that this threshold isn't working, and there's a few projects coming up, so we've been quick to come back to this, and we've been quick to change this threshold, but after these few projects, if there's still issues with this, I'd like council to come back to the table on this and stay on top of it, to move quickly if, if this threshold is not working as well.
So the Responsible Contractor Ordinance was designed to save taxpayers' money, and it was designed to specify how much each project should go for and be worth, and that's our entire goal. But like, like all of the communities that have adopted this, everyone seems to have a problem with either getting bidders or having, having different problems. The, we've had multiple jobs come back, just like one that we did tonight, that we, we had six bidders, none of them were Responsible Contract Ordinance certified. So what we'd have to do then is disqualify them all and start over again, which is kind of a big waste of time. So the entire idea is to widen the field, get more contractors, get more people involved, and hopefully by, by putting the amount back up to 500,000, and by having, there's a lot of stipulations in there too that protect the taxpayers and control the jobs where they want to extend different parts, do add-ons and stuff, so all of that, all that is in there to control that, so we don't have that. So I hope this settles it. I'm sure this won't be the last time this gets adjusted here, but we do have multiple projects going out for bid probably next week, and we have set amount of money for each one that the money and the amount we got from the estimators when the engineers first designed this job when we had the ARPA running, that was two years ago. So I don't want to see the last job come up and we overran on all of the other ones because we didn't get enough bidders, and then the last job doesn't get finished. So we hope this will solve it, and I'm sure it won't be the last time this gets amended, but like every other community, this is a learning experience with this Responsible Contractor Ordinance, so everybody's learning on it, not just us. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 226, 2025, amending Resolution 27 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Thomas J. McLean and Associates as City of Scranton Project Consultant Recreation Needs Assessment and Project Activities for the period December 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2024, to amend the project engineer to Colwell Nagley Associates, Inc.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage for item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally, lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 227, 2025, ceremoniously dedicating Cliff Street adjacent to the Steamtown National Historic Site in honor of John M. Hart, Jr.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I was asked to read, John Hart, Jr., Attorney John Hart, I guess he would be Attorney John Hart III, I believe, asked me to read this, he couldn't be here tonight. So on behalf of my family, including my entire, including my wife, children, father's daughter, Elizabeth McDonald, her husband, and son, my stepmother, Maureen Hart, and our extended family members, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for the honor of dedicating Cliff Street adjacent to Steamtown as John M. Hart, Jr. Way and proclaiming June 17th, 2025 as John M. Hart, Jr. Day in the City of Scranton. This recognition is incredibly meaningful to us, and we are truly grateful for this gesture. My father lived his life in alignment with the words of his father, leave the world a better place than he found it. John M. Hart, Jr. took this guidance to heart and made it the foundation of everything he did. He was a man of action. If there was an idea that needed to be done, he was on it. He didn't wait for permission, he just made it happen. After speaking of, of action, my father had a unique approach to gathering support for his ideas. He would reach out to anyone and everyone he could, he could corner, whether it was friends, local politicians, or even strangers who didn't know they were going to be roped into one of his latest initiatives. He was relentless, often chasing down anyone who would listen, all in the name of improving our city. If you answered the phone, you were probably going to hear about the latest monument, dedication, or project he was working on. He didn't take no for an answer, he took let's get it done. His efforts helped make Steamtown National Park, but that was only one piece of his legacy. He was a champion for initiatives, not just here in Scranton, but across the Commonwealth, from monuments in other cities to dedications in places like Gettysburg and Philadelphia. His impact is felt far and wide, and we're grateful for everything he's accomplished. To name the street that leads into Steamtown National Historic Site and the Trolley Museum after him is a fitting tribute to his tireless work, dedication, and love for this city. We're deeply grateful for his, this recognition. My family and I look forward to attending and unveiling dedication to newly named street and appreciate the city's gesture in honoring my father's legacy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally, lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 228, 2025, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for up to $250,000 to be used towards the Lace Village Dog Park Project.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? On the question, this is a, a project that's 100% the City of Scranton, this will be a City of Scranton park. The name just because of Village Lake, or Village Lakes is there, but this is open to the entire Green Ridge, North Scranton area, and this is the property that we purchased from UGI for $1, I'm going to say four or five months ago, but it is not a big parcel of land, so if you look at the parcel, you'll see why, you know, it is only a dog park and it can't be extended to anything else because we don't owe any of that other land. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally, lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 229, 2025, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for up to $200,000 to be used towards the Garrity Park Renovations Project.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally, lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, this meeting's adjourned.